You're recording.
All right, perfect. So I'm going to call this November 15, 2022, Planning Commission meeting to order at 6:36 PM. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will perceive this roll call here. If you could signify by saying presence when I call your name, Pat Huggins here. Eric Johnson here. Daniel Freiberger. Joe Fatisi is excused on a temporary absence. Silas Maddox. Joe Fernet. And Stacy Pennow is absent. Quorum is present. Now, the Chair will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda. Are there any comments or edits that need to be made to the minutes that were provided in the packet? Here in none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I so move.
All second. It's been moved by Commissioner Freiberger and seconded by Commissioner Huggins. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. General public comments. This is where the public has an opportunity to speak to the Planning Commission regarding issues that they may want to have heard or address with the Planning Commission, with the exception of being those items that are listed under the public hearings. In this case tonight, it would be addressing the homeless encampment issue. So any issues besides that, as that will be heard momentarily after. You have an opportunity now to speak for three minutes. Are there anybody, is there anybody in the audience that wishes to make a public comment? Seen none from the audience present and being that there is no general public on Zoom. To move on to the public hearing. Possible amendments to create a new chapter in Title 17 to Julian Municipal Code to address state requirements for homeless encampments operated by religious organizations. Director Coleman, would you please send to this place?
All right, thank you. So we'll be having a public hearing shortly and opening up for the public to speak. But first, we're going to have a presentation from our city attorney, a member of our Tara with our city attorney's office. That's going to give a background to this. And then if there's any further questions that you would like staff to address, we can get to that after the public hearing part. So we'll do the presentation and then open up the public hearing for the public to speak after public has done speaking. Then we'll close the public hearing and begin discussion. And you'll have the opportunity to ask any further questions at that time. So with that, I'll just turn it over to our attorney's office now. So Tara, Tara, could you please introduce yourself for everybody? We don't have the option to see you here, unfortunately. So, thank you.
It's okay. Tara Kahler from Thompson Gildner. I'm a senior associate. I am speaking on behalf of the city tonight. The issue here is that the city does not have any regulations surrounding homeless encampments at religious organizations. The Washington Constitution has expansive protections for religion and religious organizations vis a vis zoning. Organizations have had a longstanding tradition of hosting the homeless in terms of utilizing the protections for the religious rights under the Washington Constitution in hosting the homeless on their property. In 2009, the Washington Supreme Court held that the restrictions must be narrow for achieving a compelling goal. And again, the Washington Constitution allows for these the expansive religious protections, however, does recognize that peace and safety must be regulated as well. So in keeping with the Washington Constitution, balancing the protections for religion and balancing the religious organization's desire to host homeless populations, the motion is on the table currently to add Chapter 17, which would impose regulations around peace and safety in keeping with the 2009 Washington Supreme Court case. And then making amendments to Chapter 2.90 to the Cedar Woolley Municipal Code in order to align Chapters 17 with Chapters, Chapter 2.90. If these, if these regulations were not in place, the religious organizations would be not constrained by anything existing in the city code as it is right now. That is to say homeless encampments would not have any zoning, peace or safety regulations surrounding how they are implemented at religious organizations' property. The, the proposal here is modeled after several other cities who have enacted ordinances for the same purpose. This is also in compliance with statute in Washington. So there's, it's not without some precedent here. There are other regulations in other cities that are very similar. The permit that is anticipated in Chapter 17 is related to temporary homeless encampments. There is no permit required for safe parking. That is just generally because the administrative burden regarding safe parking might outweigh the benefits of imposing a permit. So the, the motion stands then for these amendments to Title 17 and Chapter 2.9 to address the permitting for temporary homeless encampments.
Thank you, Tara. I will now be opening up the public hearing at 6:44 PM. And did we have anybody actually sign up to speak?
Yes.
Okay. Filmer, if you want to come to the podium here and state your name and address for the record.
Philip Murray, 101 West Woodworth, Cedar Woolley. I'm wondering who's here representing the homeless when you're speaking about this stuff? I don't see anybody representing. It needs to be brought up and represented by some, even the church people, some, somebody. And how many categories of homeless are there? You have drug, drug people on drugs. You have just plain homeless, nowhere to go, camp work, mental issues. You have people in travel trailers, motor homes. There are so many different categories of it. You can't just ball it up into ball and say this is the homeless situation. And you're going to end up with a lot more homeless people. Because I know a lot of people that are switching from owning homes to being able to be out of here whenever they want. And it's going to change a lot. And I just wanted you to be aware of that people need to be here to speak about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else that has signed up? Any other members of the general public present that would like to speak on this issue? Seeing none in the in-person audience and being that there is still no one on Zoom, I'm going to go ahead and I will close the public hearing at 6:46 PM. So at this time, Planning Commission is invited to discuss any thoughts that they may have or provide any questions to counsel that's present. And if there's anybody that would like to initiate that, feel free to speak up.
I'll start. I just have a sort of a general question about this. All these homeless encampments are referred to repeatedly as temporary, but I actually didn't see any sort of time limit on them in the ordinance. And I did see in one place where it was said that they could only apply for a permit every 12 months, but I might just be missing it.
It's way at the bottom.
It's all the way at the bottom.
180 days.
Okay, that was my question.
Yes, there's a 180 day limit to any temporary encampment at any at any religious facility. And then there's a, they can't apply again until the next year.
Okay, so we're on that's number six.
Is that accurate, Tara?
Yes. So if you look to, I'm sorry, I don't have page.
I found it. It's number 16 under 17, 1103, 110030.
Yes, on page 10. And that is also in compliance with the statute that governs kind of the contours of what a city can impose.
Tara, do you happen to know off the top of your head what the 2009 case was?
It is the City of Woodinville versus North Shore United Church of Christ.
You said North Shore United Church of Christ?
That's correct.
Thank you. Is there any? Anybody else? Commissioner Huggins, do you have any questions or comments?
No comments this morning.
Commissioner Freiberger?
Um, well, I assume requiring SEPA is within the legal guidelines as well. 30 days for a minimum timeline seemed kind of short to complete that, but.
Which section are you referring to? Tara, are you familiar with the 30 day, with the 30 day comment, the requirement to that Commissioner Freiberger was speaking of?
Are you referring to page 7.0? The application must be filed at least 30 days before the date on which the temporary homeless encampment is proposed to move on to the proposed location. That's correct. Thank you.
So that does pose a, you know, a processing issue, you know, what Commissioner Freiberger is speaking of. If we run SEPA, which we understand that we do, it would be difficult for us to, for the city to approve a permit in 30 days. So does that statute imply that the city only has 30 days to approve the permit?
I don't read it that way. I suppose it could be read that way, but I, I read that to mean that, that is a ceiling in terms of the amount of time that the religious organization must file their application.
But not a requirement on the city's part to issue that permit within 30 days of the filing?
Correct.
May I recommend that we put a little disclaimer at the end of that sentence saying something to the effect of this clause does not require the city to approve a permit within 30 days?
Yes.
Good question.
And then just a kind of a clarification question when it mentions hardship and that the director can make some judgment calls on, on that. IS, is SEPA one of those things that could be waived?
Tara's got a great answer to this one.
So, no, it cannot. And I'm just trying to, sorry, scroll back through my notes here. The Washington Legislature considered making an exemption for SEPA for temporary homeless permits in 2019. But that effort to exempt SEPA from this particular type of process was not successful, which to me would indicate that SEPA would then, yes, apply. And in other situations in other cities, the city has undertaken a SEPA process in order to have that economic, I'm sorry, that environmental review. So yes, I would say that SEPA does apply. There are no exemptions in the SEPA statutes to indicate that there would be an exception. Nothing wiggly that we could even kind of argue that would apply in this situation.
Thank you. And is there also precedent for the one acre, the land's minimum land size requirement?
Yes, I believe that's in the statute as well.
Okay. That's all I have.
Commissioner Fernet, do you have any questions or comments?
Couple. Has there been any religious organizations that have requested a temporary encampment?
I'm a little gray on the issue. I believe, yes. And they approached the city and were, wanted to know what the rules were. And I believe the response was, well, we better make some rules for you then, for you to be able to. Because they were interested to know what the rules were. And so the city has been in contact with them and about this regulation, proposed regulation.
Well, following what Phil said, Philip, sorry. I don't see anyone here from that organization commenting. It'd be nice. I don't see anybody, a lot of this, the rules I was happy to see are pretty stringent. And a lot of it has to do with enforcement. And I don't see any law enforcement here commenting either, because this could be, you know, could be a difficult task to make sure everyone's following these rules. There's a lot of rules. And someone's got to pay attention to it.
So this particular public hearing was advertised, though, extra early. Derek, it was advertised on our website. On the Planning Commission page, agenda pages, all agendas, all agendas and hearings are. We also put it on the city's news page, the main news feed, and advertised it on our, on our Facebook page, which we've been monitoring to see if there's been any contact, questions or anything. So of course, it's been published in the newspaper and there's no place to post on site because this is the legislative change. And there's not like a specific place where we would post a notice. But, so it has done, we have done extra public notifications on this. I'm unsure if anybody made any direct comments, directs, had any direct contact with any potential applicants. I'm not aware of those applicants, so I was, I didn't answer myself, but it was widely advertised.
Well, I understand why there's a need for this. It was kind of like the ABU things too. It's going to happen sooner or later because it's forced on us. So we came up with the rules preemptive. And I can understand this is kind of the same situation that this will happen regardless, but we better have some rules. So that's the good part. It'd just be nice if I've got feedback from people that want to utilize it. And will be enforced.
It will be enforced and the, the police department has been briefed on, on this issue, at least at the leadership level. It's not, it's not an official rule yet, so it's not being taught to, to people that are going to be enforcing it, but it is, it has been looked at by the city departments. And fire is also involved too. And it's a lot of, a lot of, you know, fire safety happens at, you know, any sort of concrete living, whether you've got multiple people living in a place, in a place, you know, whether it be apartment building or an assembly building, wherever people congregate, fire is a major player. And so they have also reviewed this. There's, make no mistake, like the, we're very aware of the impacts of the homeless encampment on city services. And so that is primarily the driver of an ordinance like this is to make sure that our city services are prepared and able to accommodate appropriately. That's all.
Thank you.
I did have two more comments about safe parking.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I saw at the end, it has a disclaimer in there for corrections for scrivener errors and such. But page 12 and page 13, the safe parking is, seems to be numerically how it's organized is very confusing. So I'm not sure if that's an error or I'm just. That's correct. And then 1, 2 under B, and then a small a under 2. Maybe that's correct. And then 3, 4, 5 through 8, and then C, 1, 2, 3, and then ABC. Okay, maybe that's.
That looks all right.
Okay.
Yeah, because you've got A and B are your bigger ones. And then you go a subset of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. And then you return back to C, which is the, the, the major set. And then again, down to the 1, 2, 3, and then down again to ABC. So yeah, that looks, that looks accurate. When, you know, a lot of times you'll see like the ABC being the widest indent and then under C, for example, if there's 1, 2, 3, it's indented. And then so it helps you understand that it's, we did not format it that way. I apologize if there was confusion.
Okay. Thank you. And then just wanted to clarify that the mailing for the safe parking, since it doesn't require permit, is the responsibility of the applicant, the host. And then they just provide an affidavit of mailing to the city, whereas during, for the homeless encampment, it's the city who sends out the mailing because of doing SEPA.
So Tara, correct me if I'm wrong. Since there's no permitting process for the safe parking, there's no requirement for notification and there's no requirement for SEPA?
That's, that's correct for the safe parking. There is the obligation for the, the host to notify the property owners. And there's a public meeting that's required, but those are the obligation of the host and not the city.
Okay. So the city does for homeless encampments because it's through SEPA, but since parking is not a permit, that is the responsibility of the host. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? So I have to say, I'm, I am a little bit of two minds on this whole thing. One, you know, I do recognize as Commissioner Fernet pointing out that we are getting ahead of the game when it comes to the state, which I think is always wise to try to put our stamp on things before the state can dictate to us. And, you know, I also think that this is a real issue, you know, there, there is a lot of homeless. I think there's a lot more homeless in our area than we probably would like to recognize. And, you know, it would, it'd be nice to make sure that it's not necessarily just the Wild West when it comes to encampments and that there is some regulation and some structure to it. And I, I credit the, the authors. I don't know if it was your office, Tara, or someone here at the city who drafted this, but, you know, I did think it was very well written. It is pretty stringent, provides a lot of safeguards and boundaries and sets standards, all of which I think are very much needed in a, in a situation like this that can easily get out of hand. You know, I, I realize that there are only certain parameters that we can put on it. You know, I, I would wish and I would hope that we would be able to, although I doubt it, and you can, you know, either corroborate me or, or correct me. You know, I, I wish that we could demand that there be services provided along with the allowance to host these encampments, because I feel like that is an important aspect of this. You know, the, and there's multiple different services that I'm talking about, you know, whether it's, you know, being connected with opportunities for finding transitional housing to eventually get into a place of their own and get out, have to get out of essentially homelessness to mental health services in particular, which I think is probably actually the real driving force behind a lot of this. Mental health services and also substance abuse services. And, you know, if, if we're not able to kind of make those demands or those requirements, you know, I would, and I'm sure that the city would strongly encourage that, that those get provided. Do you have any thoughts regarding that, Tara? I mean, I know you had made mention about it being narrowly tailored. So I'm assuming that there's only so much that we can put, and we've put a lot of parameters on this as is, but just curious as to your thoughts on that.
It's interesting the way that the statute is designed. Basically to, to set up the kind of the structure that there are no regulations that a religious organization may host the homeless. However, cities may enact these ordinances that have some baseline for peace and safety. When we get outside of the peace and safety regulating kind of the, the how and the where and start into the why, that's where it might get a little sketchier in terms of the impermissible versus incidental regulation kind of things that, the things that are attaching to the regulations that are imposing a burden on the religious organizations. If the religious organizations say these are not connected to peace and safety, they might have a real argument there. If the religious organizations say these are not connected to peace and safety, they might have a real argument there. So there is kind of a risk of regulating too much and requiring too much. We really have to stick to peace and safety and we're pretty safe sticking with the requirements found in the statute. There's a very strong argument that we're just kind of following what the legislature has said is reasonable for restrictions around some of these homeless encampments. So deviating from that too much. There's a risk in that. If there are city services, the correct place perhaps to tie the city service back to the. Permitted encampments would be in the, the code provisions that connect city services to people. In terms of, you know, identifying permitted. Homeless institutions that are run by religious organizations and requiring the city to. Reach out or have the. Some sort of social worker connect with the people experiencing homelessness. This is a good first step in terms of adding chapter 17 and amending 2.1. But. To take it further, I think would necessarily need additional changes in other areas of the code as well.
Okay. Another question that I have is kind of two parter is from my reading, is it my understanding that. This kind of gives a lot of latitude to the, the host or the sponsor for making their own regulations. I'm, I'm assuming that if they open up their. Their property, their premises for this encampment and they're choosing to. Sponsor, they're able to kind of create their own internal rules and regulations regarding this. And so like, you know, they can't. Just be overrun on their property with, with encampment, you know, they, because I'm. You know, the premises, I'm sure by and large, you know, like churches or mosques or tabernacles or what, what have you. And they're, they're wanting to. Kind of control where on the property these, these encampments are going to be located, whether it's in the building or outside the building. And then two. So this pretty much, you know. With that premise in mind, but it does allow for like a religious organization, whatever it may be to buy property and. Create an encampment, just kind of. Unto itself, correct?
You could do that. But again, there are the time limits imposed in the. In the proposal that would not just make a kind of a permanent homeless encampment run by a religious organization.
And then the last question that I have, which is the, in my opinion, the big elephant in the room and what makes me be of two minds about this is. The enforcement of it. So. I know professionally. Because the law firm that I work at, we do a lot of landlord tenant. And I realize this probably doesn't fall necessarily under. The landlord tenant act is, it probably would be more of an ejectment matter, but. When I asked this at the work session, I didn't really get a great answer, a clear answer. And hopefully maybe there's been a little bit of research or some clarification that's come with this, but. When things do get out of hand, and I guarantee you that they will. On some level or another, you know, how does? How does enforcement actually transpire? So whether it's the city recognizing that. The host or sponsor isn't. You know, enforcing what they've agreed to uphold or when a. License has been revoked under, what was it, 17. 110.060. Or when there's individual participants, residents of the encampments that. Are just completely unruly, you know, I. I, I just, I know it's going to come to that at some point and probably sooner rather than later, because I know with my clients, one of the first things I always hear is. I was trying to do a favor, but. And, you know, no good deed goes unpunished. And so, you know, while I do believe that this is necessary and, you know, I support passing this. You know, the enforcement mechanism needs to have teeth as well, or else, you know, this, this is not going to be. A, a good, a good addition to. Municipal code. So what, what exactly do you know what the process would be? Do you know what kind of teeth it has? I mean, is it going to be a? Long drawn out process? Cause I know right now everything is in favor of tenants with the landlord tenant act. So is there anything that you can do to? You know, squash my fears and concerns with how this is going to transpire when it does go awry?
Well. I do not exactly know the answer to that question. And I think that's a great question because I agree that this, I mean, there are no teeth, then there's. This becomes meaningless perhaps. There is the provision to have a hearing. So if the permit gets denied, I, I understand that's not the same situation exactly that you're describing here. Yeah, we don't, we don't really have that written into chapter 17. However, being a type two permit, there might be something that I'm not appreciating. At this moment, but I'm sorry, I don't have a better answer right now.
You're referring to, so. Does have a process for the revocation. So. What would happen is if it needs to be revoked, the planning director. Makes a. Just revokes the permit and, and that is a de facto according to this type two permit. So it's administrative decision, which then can be appealed by. Somebody. And then the hearing examiner would then, according to section 060, the hearing examiner would then have a hearing on the revocation. Action. And then the hearing examiner makes their decision. That hearing examiner decision is then appealable to the county, the Sketia County Superior Court. So is that the process that you were talking about, Tara?
Yes.
Do you know?
Concerns regarding kind of the public safety aspect. I don't think there's a way to strengthen. Chapter 17 without. Going into the criminal code too much. So I think that, you know. The public safety concerns while they are a reality. Would be better addressed. By law enforcement. And it sounds like there's been contact with law enforcement leadership to apprise them of this proposal.
And your concerns are. But out of the, the city.
Well, so, so to give you an example, because this, I mean, this is going to be like splitting hairs between what is and what isn't. You know, landlord tenant is, you know, under the landlord tenant act, when there is an issue that comes up. You know, between landlord and tenant. So in this case, it'd be sponsor and resident. You know, you call law enforcement and nine. 99.9% of the time out of 100, you know. They're going to turn around and say, well, this is actually a civil issue and it needs to be resolved. Talk to your attorney. So. You know, this is a residential situation. And so when. You know, disputes happen between tenants and sponsors as far as, you know, how they may. Be misbehaving or violating whatever sort of codes that they're. Codes of conduct that they're. You know, entering into. You know, that's going to be a civil matter. You know, it's not always going to be criminally based. So I mean, this is. I'd imagine this is going to end up more often than not. And being a civil matter than a criminal matter.
I guess, you know, picture, does it make any difference of whether or not we have this in place or not? Because remember. Temporary homeless, homeless encampment can happen. At the religious institution today, whether or not we pass an ordinance. So having this ordinance change.
It does, it does, because. It changes the status of the situation where one is just a. You know, at a, at a certain point unauthorized guest situation. And there's a clear statute and procedure for that. I'm curious if there, being that this is a different status. That these residents will have, they're not just simply guests, they're now resident of an actual recognized encampment. You know. I mean, I, like I said, I'm going to support this regardless. I just want to make sure that there's like some sort of teeth and enforcement mechanism to it. And I'm not hearing a whole lot of that. I mean, I, I realize that the permit can be revoked and that there's a. Adjudicating process with a public hearing with that. And that's, that's great. But, you know, I, I know that on an individual resident basis, there's going to be issues that are going to crop up. And how do you go about? Dealing with those?
So it seems to me that what you're describing is almost like a. Mechanism for resolving disputes between the. Participants in the encampment. Or between the host and the. The person experiencing homelessness.
For the most part, yes. Like, because they're, they're being held to a certain standard, you know, there, there's certain. In order for an encampment to exist in this, under this code, you know, there are certain things that have to. Be adhered to and, you know, whether that's the, the sponsor not properly enforcing. Or just a dispute between the sponsor and the, the resident of the encampment. You know, there, there's going to have to be some sort of delineated process.
What role would you see the city having in that process in terms of the permit?
Well, if, if, you know, things aren't properly being enforced. You know. They're. They're an established type of residency under the city's, you know, designation. So the. City is naturally going to have a role to play in the enforcement of these encampments to a degree. I don't know whether or not, you know, I mean, the, like we've said, you know, there will be enforcement from the city with these encampments. So. You know. I mean, it, it's a kind of a, a two element kind of enforcement that I'm, I'm calling into question here. I mean, there, there is whether or not. The sponsor is properly hosting versus whether a tenant, a resident is properly residing there. I mean, because there's two different, I guess, for lack of a better term, ejectment matters that could crop up there, whether it's. The permit being revoked. I mean, okay, so it's revoked, then how does that? How does that get enforced? Because I, I know that superior courts are very slow. And cautious to evict anybody from any sort of dwelling situation.
I would imagine that that relationship and interaction would be between the religious organization and the participants in the encampment rather than. Between the city. And the encampment participants, because really the relationship here would be between the city. And the religious organization as the permitee. But I agree that there could be teeth, right? There's, there's nothing in the statute prohibiting a penalty for non-compliance.
That's what I was going to ask. Would it be possible to enforce fines, code enforcement? As it's done with other types permits?
And. Forgive me for not knowing this, but as a type two permit. I imagine there are enforcement mechanisms for that type of permit, correct?
This. So typically chapters. Violations of chapter 17 go to the code enforcement chapter. Which is chapter 18. It is not specified in this ordinance. Whether it goes to criminal, the criminal code, or if it goes to the code enforcement code or. Compliance with the. Code enforcement.
Okay. So we could make that more clear.
Very quick question for you. You had made mention earlier about other municipalities have. Have enacted similar codes and you were kind of piggybacking off of them. What, do you know what municipalities those were?
Mount Vernon has a pretty identical looking. Code. Vancouver has a safe parking zone. Encamping ordinance. And with that, they have a safe parking zone code of conduct. I also found reference to. Sorry, I have a lot of notes on this.
No.
Like Washington has a safe parking program from 2020. And it appears that that has only applied to one church, the United Methodist Church. But also, you know, without kind of digging through every city's code, I'm not entirely sure if that represents.
No, no, that.
Portion or all of the cities that have.
No, no, that, that's helpful because that, that gives me an opportunity to see if there's any cases of first impression that. You know, because I'm, I'm sure that they've dealt with some of the issues that. We are raising as far as concerns. And so it'd be, I'd be curious to know exactly how those transpired. So thank you. No, that's, that's helpful. Any other comments or? Questions for council?
Many questions.
There's your opportunity.
Well, I don't know what safe parking means, like an Anacortes on. With avenues that not are S Avenue, T, T Avenue. They've got people parked all along there all the time in these rundown. Motorhomes where you want to call them, they're not even street legal, I don't think. And I know people with businesses around there and they have to lock their water up because their, their water bills went through the roof because everyone was taking water in the midnight. And their businesses are broken into constantly. Now this is, that's that, and that this is this, but. You can't help but think, your mind wanders when you're reading this stuff. And you're, you're saying to yourself, is this what we're inviting? And I don't know. So there's so many questions. I don't want what Anacortes has. Not for anybody in this city. But this might be entirely different. I just don't know.
Well, I think the. Well, I think the. Argument that could be made, because I, I do share your concerns is that this is us trying to get it. Ahead of the curve on that, because, you know, this is coming down the pike and it's better to have some sort of structure than no structure.
Right, I agree.
So, you know.
But the enforcement.
Right.
It keeps coming back to enforcement. You could say, okay, clear out. That'll be the day. Okay, never mind. Is it going to come down to that? That's what I see. Anyway, I'm glad we're doing something. Just, we gotta do it right. I don't want to invite it, you know, by doing this, or we're saying, okay, everybody come to Seagull.
I think if you're, I mean, I agree that the flip side of the coin there is having some parameters. And some rules to establish, you know, baseline of safety. I think the, the bare minimum is anticipated by the statute that lays out what is possible for. Organizing ordinances around. So the restrictions about here, you have to have a certain amount of square footage. You have to have this many parking spots. Have a fire extinguisher. There's at least a baseline. I don't think that it's a, a. Generous provision of services enough to draw people. To be, and this is just complete speculation too, but I don't think this is a generous provision of services. That would invite safe parking. I think this is just parameters that religious organizations must abide by if they're going to offer safe parking.
Yeah, I, I was warned by a person I know. That lives one thousand feet from a homeless camp and he sees what happens when things get out of hand. And he said, for instance, uh, they stopped enforcing the drug part of the rules and next thing you knew. The septic, uh, what do you call it? The Santa can outfit stopped picking up the Santa cans. Because they were full of needles and no one was stopping it. And so therefore it just started going downhill from there rapidly. So the key he said was you've got to set up the rules and keep the rules. Someone's got to police it. So that's all I'm going to say. To get out of hand. So as long as we're there to, to, to watch it. Someone's there to police it and we mean it, it's got some teeth like your terminology, then. I guess that's what we do.
I, I now have a question here. Go ahead. So you, you got me thinking, because you know, when I was, when, when we were presenting this. I mean, I suppose it was in the back of my mind that people might be coming from other communities, but I also assumed that it was probably to serve our local community. And I'm wondering, is there a mechanism or something that we can put into this ordinance that says that it's primarily for. Supporting our own community? I mean, we have, we have a lot of homeless people here in Seagull, so we wouldn't have to go outside to find people to, uh, to fill it, uh, any of these things probably. But is there a way to limit it so we aren't being flooded by, uh. By, uh, encampments of the people who are, are not even from here, have no connection to here, they're just looking for a place to land. So, uh, anyway, Dr. Do you have any, is there any way to? To limit that or put that in the ordinance? Is that forbidden by the states?
Probably not. You probably have a dormant commerce clause issue with that, so I would. Um, my recommendation would be to stay silent as to the people who are serviced by these encampments.
You don't think it's a good thing to put that in the ordinance?
If you're concerned at all about enforcement, that would be terribly complicated to enforce.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that was kind of my.
Right. No, I, I understand that too, go, going in that, uh, yeah, who's a resident, is it when you don't have a home anymore, you're not a resident? How do you define? Yeah, and I, I get it, but, um. But I, I'm thinking of what Mr. Farnett said, that we, I don't want to, by passing this ordinance to get in front of the state. Say, we're open for business, Seagull is a, open for homeless encampments, you know, come on in. You know, we have our own people in our own community who need, um, our, our services and, uh, and, uh, so anyway. I feel that we shouldn't be setting it up. And I suspect it's just whatever, whatever community is the easiest and has the least rules is probably the one that gets swamped. Unfortunately, that's why I. And I also had, I also had a question, um, I, I didn't get your name, sir.
No.
Could you, could you give me just a little more background of what you're saying? You, you brought up a really interesting point about, about there's going to be more people who are just giving up homes and living more of a, and. A nomadic lifestyle, uh, that.
A lot of people go on nomadic lifestyle. People don't want to be paying these high prices for houses and property passes and city amenities. And they're going, well, I can just get a trailer, camper, whatever, and, uh. Don't pay anything anymore and they go spot, spot, spot and, uh. Live real cheap and they're, they're doing that everywhere in this country right now.
Right.
And, uh, an RV park, which is right down the street on Cook Road. Is that a homeless encampment?
Yeah, basically, yeah.
It isn't. You're saying that that is.
Well, I, I, I don't know that it is, but I noticed that from the time the pandemic started, it was basically every slot full every day. Which made me think that they probably have been long-term leasing their spaces to, to people that, uh. Anyway, I was just curious about that. And so these, the people you see that might be choosing this lifestyle, so that they're not willing to pay for spaces. They just want to come to a town and expect that in that town, there's going to be a safe parking place so they can park for a limited number of times.
New stores, everything else. Most of them aren't problems. There are. Some that are, but, uh, people are living in cars and I see it, I go to the abandoned vehicle auctions. There's a whole line of cars people were living in, they got in trouble with the police, now they're in jail. And when they get out their cars, all their belongings are gone. Now they're just in the street. You, you just keep making, leaving them a hole, you know, they, they could be trying to get out. Not all of them, but they could be trying to get out and have a car to live in, get to work. Well, that's gone, they lose their jobs. So many different aspects of homelessness and you're just bunching it up. And that needs to be expanded to different categories.
Yeah, I think what we're trying to do is, is set basic limits on, on safe, uh, safety and health, uh, health standards. So that, uh, whatever happens, uh, the community is protected and those people are protected from, uh. From the thing, but anyway, thank you for, for giving me a little more information.
Thank you. Let me talk again.
Yep, that's all I, at the moment.
Any additional comments or questions? Next.
Um, I don't know. I think that, uh, you know, all these concerns are well taken. I would just, uh, remind the commission that, uh, this particular statute. Applies specifically to religious organizations who want to open up their property for temporary homeless encampments. And so it has nothing to do with campers parked along the street. It has nothing to do with, uh, homeless camps in the woods, uh. Or any other, you know, um. Sort of iteration of homelessness. And I do believe that, uh, having formal camp, encampments like this that are run by a religious organization. Offers maybe the best bet for getting people the services that were brought up earlier. Whether that be mental health or substance abuse, or just basic social work, uh, to help get housing. Or, you know, any other services that are needed. And so, um, I think that this statute goes a long way to address it. There's no sort of. Easy answers to this topic and I believe that, um. We're not going to, you know, there's not a lot we can do. I mean, at this point, the city has no ability to enforce anything. If a religious organization wants to open a temporary homeless encampment. Uh, they can do so without any of these rules right now. And so, um, I think we'd be well served to enact this, uh, or, you know, move this forward. And, um, if situations arise that, uh. Make it apparent that we need to, uh, tweak it a little bit in the future, uh, we go down that road. So that's. Good for me.
Thank you. Really appreciate that. Um, if there's no further comments or questions, uh, I do want to thank everybody, because this, this is a very heavy topic. And a very, uh, current and contemporary topic that needs to be addressed, not just here in Seagull, but everywhere. Uh, the issue of homelessness. And so I, I thank you all for your, your thoughts on that matter and, uh, points all well taken. Thank you. And, uh, thank you, Tara, for, for answering our, our questions, even when we're grilling you there. Appreciate it. So at this point, I believe that, um. That staff is looking for a recommendation, a possible support or disapproval of the ordinance. So is there anybody that is willing to make a motion to recommend or not recommend this to the city council?
I would just like to say, if the, if the planning commission is getting close to making a recommendation. I wanted to point out a couple of amendments that you were kicking around that you may want to consider while, while you're, uh, making a recommendation. However, that may go. So one was to amend seventeen one ten oh two oh E. To say this clause does not require the city to process and issue, and issue a permit within thirty days. Not just that little disclaimer that we spoke about earlier. And, um. There was a lot of serious discussion about, um, a concern of the lack of enforcement discussion on this chapter. And, um, if you wanted to recommend. For example, recommend approval with, um, with clarified language about, uh. Enforcement under chapter eight, but is it, is, is, uh, how will enforcement be handled under chapter eighteen or chap, or the criminal code? That would, any change like that would definitely require another public hearing. So we could do that at city council level. Uh, it does complicate the process to, to add something like that without specific language that you had the chance to review and, and for the public to review. So that does complicate things if you so chose to go in that direction. Uh, but the easy, you know, I did want to point out the first one that. Seventeen one ten oh two oh E. To say this clause does not require the city to process and issue a permit. Those are the two issues that came up that seemed like were likely areas for you to possibly have some.
I'm sorry, will there be a meeting? Tradition? Table in one month is one thing.
Tara, can you clarify something for us?
Sure.
So under seventeen one ten oh two oh E, where it mentions. Application for temporary homeless permit must be filed at least thirty days prior to the date. Do we need to specify whether or not that's, uh, calendar days or business days?
Yes. And, uh, we've said calendar days consistently, so I would recommend calendar days.
So it'd be at least thirty calendar days before the date on which temporary. This there and.
Unless you would like it to be business days, because that extends the timeline for. The planning department.
Uh, I'm just unclear if that came out of statute, state statute, whether it has to be thirty days.
I don't think that came out of the statute.
Staff doesn't have any preference.
And for the record, I would like to recognize that Commissioner Joe Patizzi has, uh, arrived at the meeting.
John, do you have a, a staff recommendation about the enforcement issue? I mean, ultimately, it's your office that's going to be making, uh, under seventeen one ten oh six. So you're going to be making the decision about if a permit has to be revoked, um, at least in the initial stage. And so it, it seems like the issue that you brought up or that had been brought up was whether. Then that enforcement goes to code enforcement or whether it goes to some sort of criminal statute, which I don't have any opinion about, uh, legally or whatever. I don't know that, but, um. Do you have, like? Do you have a preference about language in that regard? Or is there, maybe Tara, you can comment on this. If, uh, the city has some sort of. You know, I, I don't know, maybe we need to research that or.
I don't know offhand of our options moving forward, maybe. That's a better question for the planning department at this point, but I'm definitely able to research that and provide a, a better answer.
So on the, on that note, just as a question for housekeeping and whatnot. So it, it has been raised by a commissioner and, and I think it would be well taken to be considered. Is there any sort of, uh, hard deadlines regarding this? Or is this something that we could further deliberate? I mean, it, it is, uh. I mean, it's, it is a rather extensive, um. Code change and a important and also, you know, heavy topic as well. I don't know if, um, if it's the desire of the entire planning commission to possibly table this for the next. Planning commission meeting to make final deliberation, have opportunity for staff and council to do some research. And then make a final recommendation to city council. Um, I, I don't know if there's any background there that we aren't privy to.
Are you looking at me? I was looking up other code, um, other, uh. See really planning, uh, permitting code under the zoning code to see. Where enforcement matters might be.
Well, while, while you're doing that, to allow you some additional time, and since Commissioner Patizzi has come, um, right at the tail end of. Commission's deliberations and comments, I wanted to open it up for you to have an opportunity. If you desire to share any thoughts or comments.
He hasn't been here for the public comments and they have a little inappropriate room to begin. Uh, Tara, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you, without, without having the same information that the rest of the planning commission has. It might not be real appropriate room to weigh in on this topic today.
I'm fine with that, by the way.
Okay. Yes, you're not here, you're not present for the public meeting, so there's, you can't opine about the public meeting.
Well, I will hold my thoughts to myself.
John, is there an urgency to move this forward, this meeting?
I only in that it's an important topic. There's not anybody that's been pressing the city that I'm aware of for a final action on this. So I don't, I don't have a good answer for you, but it is an important topic. So I'm not finding anything in our zoning code that is like typical. As far as enforcement, some chapters don't, like this chapter, doesn't say, talk about what happens for enforcement matters. That typically goes then to the code enforcement chapter. Which is chapter eighteen, title eighteen of the municipal. Which is more of a, that's not the criminal code section. So I don't, I don't have real strong answers on where enforcement with, it appears that this would land in code enforcement because it's under chapter seventeen, title seventeen. And I don't know, I don't know if Derek can help me out on that one or not.
Sure, so the chapter seventeen point eight oh entitled enforcement. The penalties are laid out and you go to procedure. There are civil fines that are laid out in title eighteen, eighteen point three five. I am sorry, I don't know what a type two permit does or doesn't do. But I was assuming that a type two permit, if you violate it, would then abide by this assessment schedule in chapter eighteen.
Yeah, okay, so what Tara's saying, and now I see it is because this proposed title seventeen one one zero is within title seventeen, which is our zoning chapter. Then seventeen point eight oh applies, which says any person violating or failing to comply with any of the provisions contained in title seventeen shall be subject to the enforcement provisions contained in title eighteen, which is the code enforcement chapter. So then, then you follow the path down the code enforcement chapter title, which has one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, nine, roughly ten separate chapters within it that address the process for code enforcement. So notices of infraction, stop work orders, civil fines, abatement, leans, unfit dwellings, structures. So the process is laid out in chapter eighteen. So that's how, if someone violates anything in the zoning code, we go through the chapter eighteen is the process that tells us how we now enforce on that noncompliance. So any noncompliance of this proposed chapter would fall under title eighteen. So thank you for finding that and clarifying that for us, Tara. That is the, that is the answer to the enforcement question. It is title eighteen. One half of the enforcement question.
I think we could also add something like termination. Other cities have had language indicating that if the resident violates the terms and conditions of the permit, it results in immediate termination of the permit. If the city learns about violence or the host has not adequately addressed the situation, then the temporary use permit may be immediately terminated. So there could be something inserted to that effect, to your point as well.
So personally, I would like to see something like that. I mean, the enforcement provision, which I've lost it now, says that, you know, the planning director can revoke the permit. And then they, the revocation has stayed all the way through the appeal process. And it seems to me that that appeal process could well outlast the hundred and eighty day length of the permit to begin with, you know, and so if, if on day two, there's some sort of egregious violation of the terms. It seems to me that the way this is written, that this thing could continue on as long as they, you know, kept the appeal process going for the full hundred and eighty days. And so, you know, Tara, I appreciated that language you shared that was a little bit stronger and made for, you know, an immediate revocation of the permit. And maybe then it could be reinstated upon a successful appeal or something like that. Or, you know, if the city was given clear indication that the criteria were reinstated or, you know, whatever it was, but.
Yeah, but the issue was cured.
Yeah. And so I certainly would feel more comfortable with language to that effect than what's currently there.
I would agree. So so is it the desire of the planning commission to continue to deliberate this, to table any sort of motion? Even though there hasn't been one, but to, to continue discussing and delivering the topic at the next planning commission to offer either further personal research or deliberation and or to allow staff to and counsel to do even further digging if necessary on any particular topics.
I think this is a real big deal. So taking a little timeout based upon what was heard today to revisit it the next time and get a little bit more feedback on it. This is a general statement, right? I mean.
I'll, I'll be honest, I don't even know how long I've been on the planning commission now, but this is probably the most difficult decision I've had to make on the planning commission. We deal with zoning stuff all the time in our comprehensive plan. We do all kinds of stuff. But here we're playing with the lives of people who are in more unfortunate, unfortunate situations than, than many of us. And also it's impacting people who have, who have money and, and their time and their lives invested in properties. And so I definitely need another month to basically soul search my answer to this. Because this, this affects this community from top to bottom. And, and I agree with Silas that, that, you know, with like all ordinances, we're gonna put whatever we do here, we're probably gonna put it in place and we will learn as we go and we hopefully covered ninety-five percent of the issues upfront. But, but we just want to make sure we're not making a mistake here. So I would appreciate an extra month if we can.
Correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, but have we traditionally met in December? I feel like we've, we have and we haven't at times.
I don't recall ever canceling in December.
We did last year, but in general, I agree, we've done it most years.
I'm sure we have in the past, but I can't remember what the rule was.
And we already have agenda items for next, next one.
So the chair is willing to entertain any sort of motion, whether it's to table it for a further month or whether it's to proceed with a recommendation or non-recommendation.
I'd like to move the table.
I'll second that.
Alright, so it's been moved by Commissioner Fernet and seconded by Commissioner Huggins to table the topic for a future meeting. All those in favor? All those opposed? Alright, so it takes us to unfinished business since the chair of the planning mission has arrived. Are you wanting to take over or do you want me to present? Okay. Fine, I won't go. Moving on to unfinished business, I requested amendments to the accessory dwelling unit ADU regulations of chapter seventeen point one zero zero. Sejuul municipal code to address ADUs for spec-built homes. And John, are you gonna lead us into this topic?
Uh, yeah. Okay, so it's been a couple of months, so I'll give a very brief rundown of this. Let's see, a show of hands from planning commissioners did not, were not attendance at the meeting where we discussed this last. Or is every planning commissioner already seen this at a meeting? Great, also, there's not a lot for me to explain then. We received a request to update our accessory dwelling unit regulations to allow for spec-built homes to be built with ADUs. If you recall, the way our code is written right now, the language is that the homeowner must live on site. And because to issue a permit, the permit is issued to the homeowner to ensure that the homeowner lives on site. And that homeowner must sign an affidavit saying they're, they're going to live on site. That created a situation where, in the case of a spec-built home, which is built by a builder who's not intending to live in that home, but to sell it to a homeowner. The, you know, the whole business model of building a home on speculation that somebody's going to buy it. The builder obviously can't sign an affidavit saying that they're going to live on site. So therefore, we can't issue an ADU permit to a spec builder. Creates a whole situation of now, ADUs can't be built with spec homes. So the request was to put language into the ADU ordinance, ADU code, to allow spec-built homes under certain conditions. Basically certifying that when the new homeowner will have to state that they're going to live on site. So the request was to put languages like that in the code. So that spec homes really be intended for spec homes to be able to build, be built with ADUs. We had a previous meeting on this and pointed out some of the pros and cons of it. And the planning commission wanted to hear from the applicants and some people that might want to use such a code. So today we have the applicants here. And there's also somebody else here who's a builder and apparently is interested in the topic also. So unless the planning commission would like to hear anything more from staff, I'd like to turn it over to Paul Woodmansey, who is the president, CEO, owner of BYK Construction. And that is who requested this amendment.
Paul, you wanna? And thank you for your patience. I'm sure that was a long deliberation to get to where you wanna speak.
Yeah, I think you guys had a great deliberation. It's a tough topic. I don't envy your guys' position. Discussing that, so. I do want to say thank you again. My, just to recognize Paul Woodmansey, owner, president of BYK Construction. Also an owner of Bucko or Buckwood LLC, which is building up Buckwood Estates. Or Bucko Estates, or mix those names. We're also building Brickyard Park and just finished up Garden Meadows here in Sejuul. Today, tonight, I just wanted to, you know, read some of my thoughts to you and then you guys can ask me some questions if you have any. Have a discussion. So today there are many barriers to homeownership. Remembered our committee in the past, it's been items like a lack of a down payment or buyer's bad credit scores. Or for me, the lack of past tax returns when I started my business. Today's a cut, today, it really comes down to two issues for people, a lack of inventory and the actual cost of housing. And no, I'm not here again to talk about the lack of inventory. So you can take a big sigh of relief. Today, I want to talk about the cost of a single family home. Everybody's been watching what interest rates have been doing across our nation. They've been moving up extremely high for the last six months. Currently, they're at fifteen high at seven percent. And this has all happened in the last six months, basically rates have doubled. This has added thousands or hundreds of dollars to buyers' monthly mortgage payments. And this increase in interest rates has been very difficult for us as builders and buyers who want to buy our houses. We experienced buyers completely walking away from the buying process altogether. They're deciding to rent and waiting for housing prices to drop or mortgage interest rates to drop. And we all know that advantage is a common ownership. And they've been broadcasted for decades, but the most important advantage is wealth building for homeowners. American homeownership, homeownership is one of the widespread methods of creating wealth for the American people. Mortgage rate increases have shut down construction activity. BYK took a breather this year, basically didn't even start a house from May until this month, these six months. We just couldn't afford to continue to build houses when people weren't buying them. And people weren't even showing up to walk through projects. That's a significant change from what has happened in the last few years. And this isn't just a buyer problem, this is a builder problem too, right, that we get to deal with. So we don't have the option of just not building forever. We have jobs finished with people that are employed, have jobs with us, with houses to build. So what we have to do is adjust what we build to make sure it meets the buying opportunity, what people can afford and what they need. So we felt like a great way for us to break this cost barrier for our buyers was to build something like an ADU with a home that would provide additional income for our buyers. The purpose intent of the chapter of your new code says, one intent is to provide homeowners with the means of obtaining through tenants in either accessory dwelling unit or the principal residence rental income, companionship and or security. If we're, if we were able to as builders, build these ADUs for our clients in our new special new construction spec homes that we sell, the ADU would provide all three of those intents to your Sejuul neighbors. With an ADU, the buyer gets rental income that assists them in breaking the barrier of the cost of housing. When the buyer submits for mortgage, their income is reviewed. They are told what they can afford per sales price based off their income. When a lender can factor in an extra six hundred to twelve hundred dollars a month of income for an ADU on a piece of property, it increases the purchasing power for that buyer tremendously. Buyer's income from their hard work as well as the future rents they would receive are both calculated in their income. With an ADU, the buyer can also have companionship and security. There's a lot of people out there who love to have their parents live in an ADU behind them. Or people who have adult children, children who need their own space, don't have a space to live. Or people that just want friends to live on their property. All three of these tenant options provide people with the companionship and security that the ADU code discusses. Lastly, the last thing I'd like to point out and bring up is that when professional home builders construct new communities, we're able to design the homes and the ADUs complement each other instead of conflicting with each other like in older neighborhoods. If ADUs were only allowed to be built by current homeowners on historic plots, the external and fundamental factors of layout and design can be often very difficult to design appropriately. And this causes frustration from the neighbors nearby. When we design and build ADUs in a new neighborhood that we are selling on spec, our buyers know that the ADUs have potential in our new neighborhood that they're buying before they ever make an offer. So you could never have a neighbor complain to the city about an ADU being constructed. They knowingly are buying that neighborhood. Also, when you, an ADU is constructed by us, it's built to meet the actual design criteria that the city's put in place without having to make variations to the code to make something like an existing, existing house match with an ADU. So it's basically, it's the opposite of putting a square peg to a round hole. It's putting a square peg to an appropriately sized square peg hole. The current ADU code is completely restrictive for builders to build ADU buildings for spec home construction. A simple, a simple addition of language that the builder of a spec home and ADU must acknowledge the requirement of the covenant that the owner must live on the property and have this covenant completed and executed. When we do the closing process with a title company, we can break down the current barrier of housing costs for neighbors and neighbors. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Paul. Any questions that anybody wants to ask Paul while we have him at the podium?
I think this is a typo on the attachments. We have attachment one required. Request from the BYK Construction to amend the existing ADU regulations in the urban village mixed commercial use.
That's correct.
Yeah, no, that's, that's not right. But it's definitely, because you're not requesting a change to the UVFU. Pick it up. I don't have any questions.
I have a question. And this might, I don't know if you have any comment on this, Paul, but John may also. What happens when you, as a spec builder, build a house that has an ADU and there's this covenant requirement for owner occupancy? And somebody doesn't want that. Like, somebody might be buying this home or, or maybe they live in it for two years and then they want to move out and rent it out or whatever. And that ADU goes into violation. Maybe, John, this is your department. What happens to that ADU? Is it just like no man's land then? Like, it can't be rented out separately from the main structure? Or like the whole place has to be rented to one person? And they can utilize it as they see fit?
Really good question. Presumably, if they just, you know, say someone bought the house and they're like, "We don't want to use it in an ADU. We've got, you know, grandma living with us." Sure. What's the difference if it's grandma living in there or it's, you know, rented out to somebody else? Like, if it's a family member, I guess, you know, kind of like, well, you know, I guess it's just part of your house. You don't need to sign the ADU stuff. But yeah, enforcing ADU regulations is extremely challenging because we don't typically go knocking on doors saying, hey, you know, who's living in here?
Sure.
Now, we, we do have the requirement that they, they sign something stating that they're following the rules. So if they've signed that, then, then they're allowed to have an ADU and they're following the rules.
Sure.
We don't track when houses sell though, necessarily. These are all things that we discussed during the ADU discussion to begin with. So we don't necessarily track when houses sell, but you know, if we catch wind of one, I guess, I need to send them a letter saying, hey, you need to, you need to get right with the zoning ordinance or your, or forcement under Title 18.
Well, again, most likely what would happen is you're going to have a neighbor complain.
Sure.
And they're going to say, hey, John, this person moved out and Paul Woodmancy bought the house back and it's rented. Not that I would do that, but you know, anybody who buys a house from somebody else, they have to follow, the title company will have this on type. Brought up, it'll be brought up through the real estate process, right? So whoever buys that is going to know the rules. And we all know that there's people that break the rules all the time.
For the record, I am for this allowance for spec-built ADUs. I think it's a great idea. I don't have any, as long as they comply with our existing ADU ordinance, I have no qualms with it. And as the planning commission well knows, I oppose to the owner occupancy requirement inherently. And so I am not, you know, this is just another example of where I find that requirement problematic. And so anyway, I'm, I'm going to have to leave here in like a couple of minutes because I got a childcare, a child that, a babysitter that needs to be removed. So I don't know if we're going to take action on this tonight or?
Well, there's no actual code presented here. Today was an attempt to get total feedback so we could write something specific, an amendment to the, to the code if the planning commission's even interested in seeing, going to make a recommendation. So, but I need to actually massage what BYK put together for us to, you know, fit into code and bring that for you to review as an actual code change. And with all coaching is required, a public hearing. So we need to have a public hearing. So nothing to stake.
Okay. Feel free to leave.
I'm going to leave. I, 15 is kind of my cutoff, so I'm going to take off. And you all know why I stand on this, so carry on.
Thank you, Silas. Any other questions that anybody wants to pose of Paul Woodmancy here?
Just small, I, like Silas, I agree, it sounds great. I'm surprised we didn't think of it when we were doing this originally. But I think I was thinking large lots, established house with a huge backyard, plenty of room for an ADU or a two-car garage or what, you know, over rec room, over garage. Big houses, big lots, that's how I envisioned it. But nowadays, you know, you got to squeeze four to five houses into an R5 per acre. The lots are getting smaller.
Sure.
So are these going to be attached, do you think, in your mind? Can you walk me through what you envision?
Yeah, so at our Bucko Estates property right now, our lots are on the larger size. They're 7,000, 6,000, 7,000, so, which are bigger lots for sure. We're currently designing plans right now for that project. And so we're kind of designing them to fit an ADU.
Detached or?
Detached mostly, yeah. We like the idea of the house, you know, kind of front tucked up front to create a large backyard. And then the ADU off to one side, all the way to the back that creates additional parking for the ADU and for the house. His parking is always a problem. But it also kind of creates a private backyard area. So most of the designs we've come with so far are that kind of strategy. We haven't come, we haven't gotten to the point where we think that a, like, house with an attached garage with an ADU above it. I don't think that's what our buyers would want. They'd want more of a separated solution, so.
Now that I think about it, it used to be part of a municipality where just about everybody had an ADU in the basement. They had nine-foot basements and every one of them had an outside entry and almost all of them were rented out.
Yeah, that, I mean, that, there's definitely, that's when you have that kind of vertical separation too. I think that's something that people would really like, especially if they're alley-loaded lots in a basement. From behind, the house is loaded from up above or something like that. For a daylight basement scenario, but on Bucko Estates, which is what we're imagining this going in, we have flat lots in the sand, you know, we're not going to have basements.
If you built 10 houses there, would all 10 have the ADU? Not just, like 10%, maybe 20%?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's buyer-driven, right? So I'm going to start out, I'm going to build four to six houses. You know, I'll probably do two to three of them with an ADU. See what the market says. The market could say, Paul, you're crazy. I want this, you know? And I could never build them again. It's possible, so.
In my pea brain, I thought, if a person can't afford one house, how are they going to afford two houses?
Sure.
But, and then it's expensive for you because now you're paying two of the impact fees or one and a half.
I'm not sure exactly about that.
So you pay one and a half impact fees, so your prices are going up.
Absolutely.
The price to buy the place is going up. And then I tried to buy a rental house once where I wasn't going to live in it and they, they wanted to, I can't remember the interest from what rate, interest went, rate went way up. Oh, I know what it was. I had, instead of 20%, now I have 40%.
Yeah.
It may not pan out, but I agree with what you're trying to do.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, there's no doubt there's a risk to it for us, you know? We're making some market assumptions and, you know, if rates dropped down to 3% again in six months, then the strategy could be different. People could say, hey, I would rather not have an ADU, right? So I'd rather, you love pre-sales and stuff there, people come and say, no, I don't have to pay you. I can afford this on my own, no problem, you know? We're just trying to put all the tools in our toolbox we can to make sure that we're continuing to build and continuing to build things that people can buy instead of us having to rent houses. Because I, you know, I like rental homes, I like owning them, I like owning apartments, you all know that. But, you know, on the flip side of it, I love selling houses to people and have them brag about their house to their friends. You know, I love that side of what we do and I love that people have pride in buying at BYK, you know? And so it's a big deal to me to be able to sell homes and sell things that people want to live in and that I can create jobs for people and make a profit at the same time, you know, all those good things.
Good, I agree. Thanks.
So I think it might be a good idea to put some bounds on this. We're saying this should be specific to spec homes. For what a spec home is that means, other people might have. And then secondly, I'm envisioning this, you say new developments, I'm envisioning this for long talks. What, want to put some?
Yeah, I mean, you know, Ruby and I were talking about that actually. Ruby Davis, a friend of mine, also a builder. And, you know, would we limit it to what's a new development? Yes, right? It's a little question. Is a single-family home on one lot where a house burned down and now somebody buys it and wants to, like me, buys it, wants to build a house, an ADU? So I think that's a conversation you also have, you might want to look at the short plot or houses and above or something.
That's a good call.
Why would that matter though, in an example like that, house burning down? Because it's in the code anyway.
Yeah.
And it's, it's already there and that's always been my point. That's why I don't have a problem with exactly what you're proposing. It's already there.
Yeah.
And it does make sense to do it upfront, just from a design guideline standpoint.
Absolutely.
So I didn't have a problem, but why would we even think about something like that? It would be the option on who's going to buy the property. Somebody building a single-family house, they're probably doing it for themselves. And that whole example, kids, parents, all that stuff, that's all legitimate stuff. We beat that death ball and we did that code because that's pretty much what it's going to be. Back to the other reasoning as well, that does get included for the income calculation. So from a lender's standpoint, yeah, it could be the difference of getting that higher loan amount simply to the fact that you know you have established baseline, let's say 1,400 bucks a month or whatever it comes out to be, that gets thrown into the calculation. So.
Have to agree. If it was up to me, everyone would be done this way.
Yeah, I mean, if I was sitting on the commission, I'd say I wouldn't limit it at all because I don't, I don't think it's ever a bad thing to have a professional builder come in, build something that's going to work well. Does he design well, meet the criteria that you, you know, want to see in these developments and then be turned on itself. So I would, I wouldn't limit it at all, but it's something that.
In the back of my mind, I'm thinking, no, that makes an R5 and an R10 or something like, you know, math is off.
Sure.
In other words, you're doubling, almost doubling the population of an area that shouldn't be.
Yeah, I mean, it's not going to happen on every lot, you know? But you're right, it does double the population. The other reality of these spaces is somebody might buy it right now because they need the income and they, five years from now, are making more income and they boot that person out and they use it for their at-home office.
Yeah.
You know, like, that's going to happen. There's a lot of remote work now. There's a lot of people doing that, you know, having that private space with the kids and the family in the summertime for whoever's a, you know, breadwinner of the family. And I mean, that's going to be something that will happen, you know? So, and the spaces don't always, you know, it could be just a, hey, our 18-year-old son now is, or 17-year-old son now is moving here. He wants to split up Tommy and Joey from the one-bedroom they share. You know, I mean, that stuff's going to happen too. So it's housing options and throughout our community is extremely important, you know? And we've had those conversations in the past, you guys, you guys know that. This is just another tool, the tool chest that we have as a community to create more housing options.
So all the, one concern I have is that every, every builder is not as conscientious as you are. And because I, I'm not going to name names, but we've had builders who built really schlocky stuff in town and, and it wouldn't have been better to have them do the plan than, than an individual homeowner buying the thing or, or pre-selling, or having you pre-sell the home to them where they saw the plans and then you built it for them.
Yeah.
And so that, that, that's one concern I have. And then the other is what Joe or Joe said down there about, about upzoning and stuff.
Yeah.
And I understand why you would do that because if you just, if we upzoned, if we said now we're R14 instead of R7 or R10 instead of R5, then the values of the property go up and you lose the, you lose the savings for the person who's trying to buy the, the home. So that, that's the conundrum, I mean, on this one. Help me out of it.
The first, the first problem was the other builders that don't have the same respect to the community, I guess I'd call it. Um, you know, that's there no matter what. So you're going to have builders that don't do a good job. The good news with ADUs and this whole process and every plat is that there's a building permit process, right? And sure, John's not able to tell everybody to put this, what siding product? And he can't tell them how to design the house, but there are certain criteria you have that they have to meet that are the minimums, right? And I guess your building department, planning department are your watchdogs for that. And I would love to be a builder in town, but it's not the reality. So I think that, that's just something that, to say, hey, I want to hinder the good guys because the bad guys might do the same thing, you know? I think it's a progressive stance, I guess I would say. So the second problem was kind of upzoning. I think it's a problem for neighborhoods that are older neighborhoods, historic neighborhoods that, you know, hey, I've lived here for 30 years and we've never had ADUs everywhere through here. When you have a brand-new neighborhood though, you know,
you know, people don't know what they, 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 they know what's there and.
Yeah, exactly. And so, but when they buy into a new neighborhood, you know, it's, they're buying into what that neighborhood is. And when our 55-plus buyers that's ever here partner in, you know, they buy in because that's a 55-plus neighborhood, you know? This neighborhood would be one that's potentially has what some people see as a detriment, as being an upzoned neighborhood, right? If those people don't want to buy in that neighborhood, they don't like that, they're just not going to buy there. And I'm taking the risk building that upfront, saying, hey, I think the majority of people are going to want this.
And again, I'm not, I'm not speaking to your project specifically. I'm just saying that my, my feeling is that a lot of people end up buying into neighborhoods just because they're going to get in at whatever neighborhood they can get into. And then they'll later, when they get making more money, they'll, they'll build their dream home or they'll move to the neighborhood they want.
Yeah.
And so, so I kind of get your argument, but on the other hand, I, I feel like sometimes people just, just, they got to get in to get in. It's like you said, it's the best way to build equity and wealth and you just got to get in the game. And so I'm, I would be curious to know how many people just get into whatever they can get into and then, and then move up, so.
You know, I, I mean, just to speak frankly, a lot of my buyers, you know, it's, houses' costs have been very high for a long time. So people buying are deliberate. They're buying for, because they want a nice home. They're spending a lot of money on that home already, right? It doesn't feel in what It doesn't feel, in what I do, it doesn't feel like this is my home for my next home. Most of my buyers have been, yeah, that's a dream of mine in the future, but I'm buying this home because this works for my family, this is where I want to live. So I don't, I haven't, I haven't seen a lot of, I'm doing this for 14 years now too. And I've had two repeat clients in 14 years, so, you know, I think that most people, once they get in there and you're able to secure your housing cost at 10 years ago price, it's a big deal to change after that, right? Even though the equity you could take from that house and put in the next one, you might have the same freaking payment when you get 7% interest or 3.5%. So, you know, it's, I don't see that happening that much, honestly, so. I do, I do see a bigger issue this next year for us, next couple of years for us, with how fast costs will come down.
If, and they're not, they're not never gonna come down all.
They won't, you're absolutely right. So the problem is you'll have people wait and they'll wait and wait, prices won't come down and they'll lose five years of paying off that mortgage, right? So I'm looking at trying to get options now for people to buy now that might not be exactly what they want, but it works for them, right? And so that's why we're trying to do it.
Okay, last question is just for your, for your lot sizes, in the place where you're doing this, the lot with the ADU and without the ADU, it's a same size lot or within a little bit? So you're not, you're not like downsizing the lot sizes because they're not gonna have an ADU?
Absolutely not, okay. But lot sizes are predetermined at a preliminary but stage, then once we go to construct, they stay the same.
My other concern, and I think you've explained that enough to me, but I know that's not what you're doing, but is that I wouldn't wanna get in a situation where the builder put in all of the, the ADUs and then people who move into the neighborhoods later decide that they gotta have a place for grandma to live or for their kids to live till they can save enough or whatever, have a place to, or, I don't want them to be cut out of the process, or what do they call it, precluded from, from doing.
No, I mean, the ADU code's the ADU code, so they'll be able to build that no matter what. But I will tell you that we'll have some house plans that take up the whole width of the lot where an ADU can't be built in the future, right? And then we'll sum, with an ADU house and lot we plan, we'll actually build a more narrow home.
In order to kind of ease them.
Exactly, in order to fit. So it actually should be a pretty nice looking community because you don't have to set back, set back homes up front, at the front of the, you know, building line. You'll actually have a home that's 50 feet wide, 50 foot wide, and the next house would be 30 feet wide with a 20-foot wide ADU angle, right? So there'll be a little bit of difference there.
Thank you very much for that.
Two quick questions I have for you. By and large and in general, I do support this, I think it's a great idea, I think it makes a lot of sense. Something that I would like you to kinda talk me down from is, you know, as you made mention and I was thinking about this as I was contemplating for this meeting is, so by increasing the buying power of, you know, these potential buyers of the homes with ADUs, are you actually kind of perpetuating, you know, you're keeping the houses, housing prices high anyways? You know, and so does it actually, does it in its entirety actually solve that cost conundrum that tends to be the barrier for, for most people?
Does it get baked in?
Yeah, or does it just get baked into the whole thing?
I get what you're saying. I guess it does prevent us from having a lower price, prices of homes in order to get sales. But what it does is, so you're right about that, it does do that. I'm not saying that when I build this ADU house, it's gonna be cheaper, because it won't.
I realized.
Basically the same price, but what I'm trying to do is make an all even price scheme in which I'm adding an income stream to that buyer in order for them to actually buy. I'll be frank and honest with you guys, oh, we just pulled four houses off the market in Garden Meadows in our Holy Age's plat and last weekend and just put them up for rent. And I had four months in a row of open houses, not open house every month, but four weekends in a row of open houses, four months in a row in which I didn't even have one chill in those homes. And those homes previously had all sold before they were even considered. So we're talking about not just a, a problem of house costs. We're talking about buyers just gone, right? So, you know, it's for us to make the sales happen, we have to go to extreme measures. Then, you know, historically, this wouldn't be something that you'd do. Those people wanna buy their home, they wanna live on it by themselves for the most part, you know. And times have changed, there's something about that, you know, mom and dad living with us, or an older son or daughter living with us or, you know, the cousin that, you know, got kicked out of his house, is living with, whatever. Those things are happening and it does, you know, boil down to some lack of availability in housing also, of why those problems exist. You're right, you know, will I sell a 1,500 square foot home with the, you know, 400 square foot ADU for the same price I was just trying to sell my 1,800 square foot house at? Absolutely. But, you know, in regards to my costs, my costs haven't started coming down. And for us to continue to build homes when we sell, although we've been lowering our sales price. So in that neighborhood, we had lowered our sales price and one time and we had offered $12,000 buyer credits for paying the interest, to buy interest rates down a whole 1% and we got no move. So we're in the process of lowering prices at Brickyard Park right now, already substantially, probably 20 to 40,000 dollars across the board. So if my costs don't come down, match that, then I just don't keep building, I can't not keep building, right? So I have to come up with a solution, find a bridge that gap.
Okay, I appreciate the honesty on that too. A second question, which is related, but, you know, slightly off topic, you know, with the issue, something that was even way before pre-pandemic and before, you know, the buzzword of, you know, housing shortage was ever really a thing. It seemed like, especially in Skagit County, no one really lives by themselves. I, I mean, I feel like I'm kind of like a, an exception to the norm there, not to get too personal, but I don't believe that most people live by themselves. And so I'm wondering from a developer's perspective, if we were to add, go from a one-car off-street requirement to a two, because if everybody on the planning commission knows that parking is always a hot topic for me. You know, how does that impact you guys as far as like the ADU element of, of the code, like it's?
To on-off-street parking for the ADU.
Yeah, because I mean, I know that that's, that's always one of the big rubs with ADUs, right? When you're, especially if, yeah, if you're gonna be moving into that, you, you know that you're coming into a certain situation. Well, you know, ADU is always the, the big rub is, well, okay, now we're gonna have a whole bunch of, you know, parking issues and then if they have friends over, then that just exacerbates it. And so, you know, to, to kind of minimize that problem and I would imagine make it more sellable. At least that's my, my layman's understanding is, by adding like an additional parking spot, would that be advantageous or would that be detrimental to?
I think it would be detrimental to people building ADUs. In my design, how I'm doing it, I would have two linear spots for an ADU just based on how far back it's set along the driveway. John, I actually went over this pretty definitely with like a sight plane, I was showing them what I was doing. But not when I was talking more about this, but, you know, you can't always have two parking spots. And I would actually kinda argue back a little bit that being an apartment owner, I actually have a lot of single people that live on their own and they have one car. And so to have to have another space for them, no matter what, actually minimize the ability to create these units for, for people. So are there, and in the end, it's gonna come down to the homeowner and their tenant and what they allow and what they don't allow, so. I've been in the past pushing for parking code, trust me, really, which I think is a topic you guys should cover someday. Because the city doesn't enforce parking laws and it all that. But, you know, as, when I approach it, you know, I approach it, we have parking desks that are apart. You know, once a week we go through and we look at cars that don't have them, we tow them or we find out who's they were, you know. So it's about a tenant, what I'm getting at is it's a landlord-tenant issue that I think is solely in their discretion. And if they rent their ADU to two people that have two cars, then that owner needs to step up to the plate and say, here's your two parking spaces, right? And that means that they need to park in their garage, they need to have two cars in the garage. They'd have two cars in front of the garage, they could have two cars alongside the house, that'd be six total for a parking spot on one lot, so. I don't, I don't think it's a good idea personally. If you wanted that to be tied to how many houses, how many bedrooms there are, then that's something that could be, you know, if you have somebody who puts in a two-bedroom ADU that meets a square footage requirement, it would make more sense to me that, you know, require two parking spots. The ones I'm looking at, though, they are pretty small, they're meant for one person. Somebody renting it out to two people would be pushing the envelope.
Sorry, I was just thinking that in Cedar Valley, the, kind of it's a default that your front yard is, is the extra parking space. You know how many houses there are in town where they park, they just drive it in on the grass.
Yeah, or Toyota pickup side by side.
Yeah.
Don't mock. Where the place doesn't put it.
Just as far as everything that goes with this, you know, we are in a design phase for our project. We spend a lot of money on design, so knowing whether this is, you know, something that is gonna be approved and moved forward is important to us, so, you know, if it's not, if something you guys support, I would just ask that kindly that it doesn't get withheld back in terms of making some motions for eventually.
I think it's something we missed on the original draft, it just makes all the sense in the world to me. It's no different if you do it on the backend versus the frontend, as long as the same stipulations are there regarding other occupancy. We got enough people in that law, so, so I'm fine with that stuff.
We're gonna address it in the summer of 2000.
I'll be a little late. You might see a bunch of houses pushed over to one side.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Mancin?
Yeah, just one, so how many homes you do that are, that are pre-sale? Is that in the equation or is that?
I would say probably 10% of our homes we build are pre-sale, not that many.
So they're looking at a plan and they look at the lot and then?
Yeah, we have a, you can go online, you can look at the lots that are available. Each one of our projects has a website that has a flat map and you can click on the lot, it'll tell you what house will fit on that lot and you can choose your house.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you, Ruby, for coming out and attending. With that, that concludes our unfinished business for the evening. Hopefully staff has, you guys have enough directions.
We're gonna move forward, if you'd like to, if you'd like to see something.
I feel like the consensus is definitely moving forward with.
And we'll hopefully try to have a, like your, about next month, it's gonna be a crazy meeting. We've got live work on next month's agenda, we've got, what else? Breweries. We now have a public hearing for homeless encampments on next month's agenda. And so.
It's a rocket docket.
And then this would have a public, this is ready for a public hearing then too. All right, so do we put four on the, four public hearings on next month's, December 20th meeting?
Merry Christmas.
Yeah, we've done a lot of meetings before, this isn't the first time. When we were doing.
Yeah, we only got two today, 8:35.
Yeah.
We have to start. I expected, I wasn't.
And no public input, I mean, we had these gentlemen that felt like on the, on the homeless ordinance. I was expecting a room full today and saw nobody, so.
Well, there will be another public hearing, so there'll be another shot at it, so if.
I'm just saying if they showed up, if 25 people showed up and wanted to talk and we have four things on the docket.
Just so you know, we'll see if we can put four items on next month's docket. It's a few days, five days before Christmas. Never know.
It's pretty much already written, it's fine.
So it's up to you if you want all four items on that agenda, otherwise.
I'm fine with it. Homeless ordinance probably isn't gonna take a lot of time either.
See which ones we delay.
Could live work be delayed until January?
I don't, I don't think so.
Okay.
So, just playing our, our hot chocolate thermoses and a pillow and be ready to.
See, it's the American inner.
So anyway.
Spends fun glass on coffee to get us through.
As a nice question, I would anticipate not needing to be home by 15 or even nine. Next meeting. We've got to have the nine punch cards, yeah. No, no from this moment on, I'm for a marathon next time.
You're never walking. All right, and so there's no items of new business, any items for the good of the order that we has? All right, well, in that case, the chair will happily entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn, all those in favor?
Hi.
All opposed, we are adjourned at 8:44 PM. Good night, everybody.
Thanks.